Public hearing is called to order. Dennis, well first everyone, we have our -- Dennis, do you want to talk about the issues first on this first?
Actually, we had to make a vote to establish a quorum first.
Oh, that's right, we do. In fact, let's have a roll call. Frank Thorwald.
Stephen Cooper.
Bill Fire Robin.
On the --
Dale Nations on the phone.
We have a quorum. Let's move on to the issue at hand, the well spacing.
Just for information, it's a 10 o'clock hearing on the well spacing exception requested by Ranger Development, set for 10 o'clock in this room at 3100 feet. And with that, as a brief description of last time, there were -- we began this hearing, United Helium came in and indicated that they had an interest in the well and they are objecting to the Ranger well spacing because their adjacent piece of property, they were planning on putting a well and it may interfere with the spacing. During that time, we talked about an agreement where United Helium may or may not have standing. Today, I see Gordon LeBlanc is here also, so we can address that. That is the purpose of the 10 o'clock hearing, is the Ranger Development well spacing. We do have an 11 o'clock meeting, which is the actual public meeting, so from now, we're going to move forward on the 10 o'clock meeting on well spacing. Dennis, did you have more issues, or how did you wish to move forward?
Okay, so I want to summarize what we're here for, in addition to what Rick said. First of all, part of the hearing is a continuation of the issues of Rick, which Mr. Dice just summarized, in regards to Ranger Development's proposed development of the OSO 15-1. Since our last hearing, Ranger has expressed an interest in another public hearing setting for approval of either reentering an old well that was drilled in 1965, which doesn't meet the current standards for spacing exception, or getting a proposed well that was approved last July, reapproved, so that they can drill it. The hole in question to be re-entered, it's called the Ram Oil Company 1-9 Hortonstein, and it's a park of only 111 feet, south-southeast, I believe, from the proposed location of the 9-1 that was covered in the hearing on July 20th. So, we're here kind of a two-part thing. The other thing that I mentioned in the agenda was that, to give maximum flexibility, both for the commission and for Ranger, we're going to discuss the pros and cons of reentering the Hortonstein 1-9, or just going ahead and reapproving the original 9-1 permit application.
Is Gordon Dudley here?
No, he's not.
Okay. Does anybody else have the requested information?
We've submitted the -- need to get a lease.
You did?
Yes.
When?
Two days ago.
Could you come up here and speak, so we can --
Thank you.
And speak up, please.
So Dale can hear you.
Would you repeat what you just said?
And identify yourself, please.
Oh, yeah, I'm Ray Hobbs, I'm the CEO of United Helium. We have a state lease that covers Section 16, and we originally objected to Ranger's well location being too close to our leasehold. We did provide, we did send Dennis to buy a --
Do you have a copy of the --
Yes, I did.
I didn't get that email.
I'm sorry.
It was sent two days ago, so it was sent Wednesday?
Yes.
Dennis, could you speak up, too?
And here's the, here's a copy of the email.
Can I keep this for the public record?
We'd like to redefine our objection previously from the last meeting, as long as Ranger stays at 1500 feet and above, and doesn't go any lower, we have no objection to their well location.
State the first, please state the terms one more time, please. The terms one more time you just mentioned.
As long as Ranger stays above the 1500-foot elevation, and doesn't go below that, we have no objection to their well location.
You're talking total depth?
Please identify yourself, too, of being recorded today.
Oh, sorry, Bill Fire Robin. The 1500-foot level, what does that refer to? TD, collar, you know?
Kelly bushing.
Pardon?
Kelly bushing.
Okay.
Frank Thorwald here, is there any other questions for Ray?
Yes, I do have questions, Rick Dice, Attorney General. Mr. Hobbs, did United Helium request or submit any information to the state requesting a permit for drilling in this, specifically in regards to the well that you're currently drilling on your property?
No, we did not. We are not drilling it. Arizona Energy Partners is.
Okay. And can you, what's the well number again, just for identification?
16-1.
And have you reviewed the permit that was submitted, or the request and information to the state of Arizona, submitted by Arizona Energy Partners to drill this well?
Yes, I did.
And as part of that information, did you review a portion called the well prognosis section of the permit?
I must have glanced through it.
Okay.
Because it probably was included in that.
Let me ask it differently. Do you know the purpose of drilling well 16-1 as stated by Arizona Energy Partners?
Yes, it's an exploratory well seeking oil at a depth of about 22, 22,000 feet, where the Florida Apache Formation had previously shown indication.
I've reviewed, and if you want, I can get it out, I reviewed that request for permit, and from the well prognosis I looked at, they were prognosing drilling this to at least 4,200 feet, correct?
All the way to what's called the basement.
Okay. And the purpose of the well is for oil, correct?
Exploratory.
So, and is it --
I believe that, I believe that that's what's stated on the application.
Okay. So, as it sits here today, then, there's no intent for, or there's no intent for either Arizona Energy Partners or your company to recover helium out of this well, is that correct?
That would not be true. I think that anything that we find going down, we'd be interested in.
In review, and you said you reviewed the information that was submitted to the state for this well, correct?
Yes, several months ago.
As part of it, was there a statement made by either you or Arizona Energy Partners that you did anticipate finding helium, but it was not going to be of a commercial value and would not be recoverable?
I can't recall that.
I looked at the permit yesterday, and that's what it stated. So, the, I mean, so I have the basis of your objection to the Ranger permit is that, let me take a step back. You understand Ranger, from the information in the public file, is drilling their, is seeking a well exception so they can drill a well for helium, correct? Is that what your understanding is?
Yes, that's my understanding.
So, as it sits here today, the permit that was granted to Arizona Energy Partners is for oil, and as part of that permit, there's an indication that they don't anticipate coming upon any helium, or not discovering any helium?
I can't, I can't. It's exploratory, so whether it's natural gas or helium, or carbon dioxide, or nitrogen, or helium.
16-1 permit.
It would be this one.
Okay, thank you.
Look for the application.
I'm looking for the application.
Spacing was also for oil.
There you go. Do you want the well prognosis to go on, so you can find, or do you want Arizona Energy Partners?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Just one of the other ones.
And when he's finding that, Mr. Hobbs, let me explain my issue. Your objection to the drilling of a helium well by Ranger, you're objecting to their spacing. However, from the information I have on this permit that is being issued, Arizona Energy Partners and your company are not going for helium.
Well, let me --
Are not drilling for helium.
Let me clarify, then. My, our lease with the state of Arizona clearly states oil and gas, and so we entered into an agreement of which fees have been paid for that right. So, there is no oil, strictly oil lease permit that I'm aware of, that was issued by the state to United Helium.
United Helium doesn't have a permit, Arizona Energy Partners has a permit, correct?
No, we own the lease, though.
Permit to drill.
Permit, oil and gas rights.
And gas, in this case, does not --
Identify yourself.
Yes, sir, Bill Fire Robin. So, oil and gas, the word gas in this case applies to natural gases and helium, or just natural gases?
It would, it would be all gases found within the formation, including carbon dioxide, CO2, methane, helium, and probably hydrogen and oxygen in small quantities.
All right, let me go back to your well prognosis. I'm looking for a drilling prognosis for the Concho Dome, indicating you're drilling into pre-Cambrian down to a depth of approximately 4,238 feet, and that's part of the permit, and you reviewed the permit, correct?
You, again, are referring to me as United Helium, or as Arizona Energy Partners?
Well, the problem is Arizona Energy Partners has the permit, so let me show you and ask you if you've ever seen this. This is a letter that was sent to Dennis Turner, that's the original. Have you ever seen that letter before?
I don't believe I have, I don't recall that email.
Let me read from, and this was sent to Dennis Turner from Arizona Energy Partners, who has the permit to draw on this land. Regarding, as previously stated, the primary targets dating back more than 20 years, just a minute, Mr. LeBlanc, dating back more than 20 years, has been crude oil on both the Concho Dome and Manuel Seep.
Manuel.
This is based on our geological review of the Holbrook Basin. The location of AEP 16-1 was based on our prior drilling efforts on the Concho Dome and its proximity to what we interpret as a strategic fault. The primary crude oil targets are the Pennsylvanian Naco and the Devonian. Regarding the high probability of helium occurring in the well, we do feel that helium is present in the Permian section, but is coming from salt-filled porosity, and therefore, in our opinion, non-commercial. This does not mean that commercial quantities of helium will not be found within the Holbrook Basin, we feel strongly that it will, just not within the Permian, on the Concho Dome, or the Manuel Seep, based on our current data. From my looking at that and Arizona Energy Partners, they're drilling for oil, correct? From what I just read, that appears to be what they're saying, isn't it?
You're asking me to draw a conclusion. We have a, our interest is gas and oil on our, on our leaseholds.
Okay, so let's take a step back. Last time, we talked about a farming agreement, where you've stated you had some interest in the property, and the interest in that well.
The interest continues to the state, it's not, it's not some interest, we hold the state lease.
Did you provide that document to the board per request at last meeting?
We sent the lease, publicly available lease, to Dennis two days ago.
However, I'm looking for the farming agreement itself, indicating that you may have rights or liabilities arising out of this well.
I believe the reason why Ranger took the time to communicate with us was we, because we do have standing, because it is our lease, they're closing, they're closed to. Now, on their, on their particular filing, they did not, what they sent us did not provide the location of the Arizona Energy Partners' well location, which was in contradiction to the state rules.
Back to my question, did you provide a copy of the farming agreement?
No, I did not.
So, as it sits right now, I have, this commission has no documentation to look at to determine if you have any rights or liabilities arising out of this well, do they? Other than lease?
Other than the state-issued lease, which we paid money for.
But you did not, you do not, you, meaning United Helium, didn't request the drilling permit AEP. Arizona Energy Partners, Chris, requested and submitted documentation for the drilling permit, correct?
That's correct. Frank, this is Dale. Dale Nations.
Go ahead, Dale.
The issue that I understand here about the 16-1 is legitimately is an oil and gas test, because they are drilling through to the basement, and they're getting into the lower peyzaic rocks that have shown signs of oil in the past. The issue, though, is that that's located, not located for gas. It violates, the location there would violate the spacing requirements that the Arizona Geol, the Arizona Oil and Gas Commission has established for gas production. So, that could not be produced, you could not produce gas from that location. So, my recommendation is you quit talking about gas there, just drill through the, interrupt into Coconino and don't even test it, because that way you can avoid the problem. But don't keep talking about producing gas from an illegitimate location.
Do the board members wish, are any more questions?
I have another question, this is Dale. Why would, why are they concerned about the Kelly bushing elevation for the Ranger well? What does that have to do with spacing?
I was just --
Just a demonstration.
This is Ray Hobbs. I was just responding to the question about the depth, and I could say ground level, but I don't know off the top of my head what the ground level elevation is.
Well, it's only 10 feet difference, so it doesn't matter if it's Kelly bushing or ground level. If you're talking about 1,500 feet as the ground elevation, what does that have to do with spacing of a gas well? We're talking, spacing requires, refers to distance from adjacent property, well, section lines. Doesn't have anything to do with the elevation at the site. So, I don't know if there's some confusion there or not, but it certainly leaves me confused if you're saying that that is significant relative to our spacing requirements.
Well, I believe that the, this is Ray Hobbs again. I was responding to a question, I realize the distance between the Kelly bushing and the ground level is, is a relatively small distance. However, in the last hearing, I believe the discussion was that Ranger's application was to 1,500 feet. That's as far as they wanted to go down, and that's what I was responding to.
Well, that's, that doesn't make any sense. Geologically. Okay, I'm off. I've made my statements.
Gordon, I think you had some comments earlier you wanted to make.
Oh, yeah.
Just identify yourself.
Gordon LeBlanc. First of all, when I was trying to interrupt you, the comments that you read, it was a request that that would be, that's confidential information.
Speak up a little bit, we're recording.
Dale, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. We want the recorder to hear you, too. Okay. So, that was the reason that I stood up. I was taught in elementary school to read the instructions, and, right here.
Mr. Blanc, here's the problem, you may ask for confidentiality, but you raised an issue in this matter by claiming an objection to a well exception by Ranger Development.
I didn't.
You're the holder of the permit, correct?
You haven't heard a word from me yet.
Just, Mr. Blanc, please answer my question. You're the holder of the permit, correct?
Yes, that's true.
Do you have any objection to the well spacing exception that was requested by Ranger?
I had a conversation with Dennis the other day, and I told him that I was going to come in here, and I was not going to object to the location of Ranger, that it would get as long as it was held at 1,500 feet.
You mean 1,500 feet depth?
Total depth, yes, sir. That is the depth on the application, I believe.
This is Dale. The issue with the Ranger location, as I understand it, is that the proposed location is in violation of our gas spacing rules now. When it was drilled, apparently there were, the rules didn't apply, but if they're going to spud a new well, or re-enter the 15-1.
Dale, we're on the 16-1.
Pardon me?
We're on 16-1, Dale, not 15-1.
No, I'm talking about 15.
Okay.
OSO.
I think that may be an issue that we're going to address later, Dale.
Okay, well, that, this, well, I thought we were talking about the Ranger permits.
We're talking about the Ranger's well exception and the objection by United Helium to the well spacing exception.
Yeah, but they're saying now that they're not objecting.
That's, that --
To the proposed location. But I'm saying that the commission has to be concerned about the Ranger location, because it is in violation of our current spacing rules for gas.
Dale, I think you're talking about the other well spacing exception, which we haven't addressed yet. The reenter, the reentry of that well is another well spacing exception subject.
All right, but it was brought up by AEP, or United Helium, so I'm responding to that that was brought up in this meeting. I agree, we're going to talk to that later on.
Does the commission have any, are you done with your comments? Let's take a step back.
No, not really.
Let's, let's hear what --
Dale brought up something that I don't agree with. This is not a defined field. When we started this process over 20 years ago, this is still an exploratory well, with the information that we have, you know, we're not, we're not trying to find anything in the upper 1,500 feet or 2,000 feet. Our primary objective is, is oil, that, as, like Dale said, it's been shown, it actually, we had some evidence of it in the 15-1 that we drilled about 20 years ago, and so we're following up the information that we gathered from the 17-1, and to drill this, the basement, and two basements, on our 16-1, Dale. And as we go down and we test the Permian, Pennsylvanian Naco into the Devonian, and as we drill in the basement, we're up there drilling right now, we may hopefully find commercial crude oil, but there could also be natural gas, and it could also be helium. Now, this is still wildcat country. Now, we're within our rights to have the permit where we are, based upon that, and, you know, I, not knowing what's down there, no one has a crystal ball in here, we may find crude oil, but it's not commercial. We may find natural gas or helium that is commercial. I wouldn't drill 1,500 feet for a helium well where that's located. That's my opinion, and Ranger could prove me wrong, but there's no way that I would spend a dollar on that. We're pretty much down, pretty close to being down through that right now. So, I have no objection to 1,500 feet, but Dale's, Dale's comment regarding our ability to produce natural gas or helium from this, if that's ultimately what we find in a deeper horizon, as a wildcat, I think we should, we should be granted that.
At a deeper horizon, I agree.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I'm saying.
But, but you're in an area where there is established helium production from the Chenrup conglomerate and the Coconino sandstone.
No, sir, we're, we're not. There's, there's no, you have to go up to the Pentadong, we're, we're quite a number of miles away from that.
Actually, I have a follow-up question. I'm looking at your drilling prognosis, and you talked about getting down into the basement, would that be the Devonian or the pre-Cambrian level?
In pre-Cambrian.
And that's about 4,200 feet, correct?
We're, we may encounter that, as high as 3,900 to 4,000 feet in here.
As you go through each of these formations, the Coconino, the Supai, each of those, the lithography of each of those is, they're specifically separated as they go down, so there's not a sharing of gas between these different levels.
Correct.
So, if Ranger is drilling in the Coconino, the Supai, and you're down at 4,400, 4,300 feet looking, are you looking, you're not going to try to, or you don't anticipate your well is going to interrupt or somehow find the same helium pocket that Ranger's looking for?
No, and we haven't found anything there.
Okay.
There's no, you know, we're sniffing for helium and other things as we go down. So, I can state right now, we're not going to produce anything 1,500 feet above.
Well, that answers my question.
So, I'd like to make a few --
Go ahead, Dennis.
-- summary remarks. My name is Dennis Turner, oil and gas administrator for Arizona Oil and Gas Commission. First of all, I put a map up on the wall here, some of this is review, or some of this is just refresher for you. The well in dispute today is also 15-1, located right here. The well is actively drilling, Gordon LeBlanc is overseeing it, this is only of the 16-1. This is in an area called the Concho Dome, I believe is the vernacular that's been used. And to my knowledge, in the Concho Dome, there's no active helium production. So, I treated, based on dialogue I had with Mr. LeBlanc, and dialogue I had with Ranger for their well. I treated the location of this well based on what was told to me, and also is now in writing, that this was a location for an oil well. Hence, the spacing exception wasn't necessary, it was a separate hearing, because we're spacing for oil, not for gas. We're having a hearing for the spacing exception for the OSO 51, because they're inside of the spacing requirements for a gas well, namely helium. I permitted this based on the understanding he was targeting for the oil. He would be drilling the basement, be testing horizons in the, like you said, in the Permian, the Devonian, Pennsylvanian, Mississippi, whatever. But there is no known production of helium in this particular area, so it's, I treat it still as a wildcat, I guess you could call it. In the rules, in unproven territory such as this, the rules allow that any production information from testing, completion data, is held automatically in confidential status for at least a year. So, that would be accorded to both parties, and I want to mention that to make it relevant to the fact that if this is a known established field and we're doing production, that confidentiality wouldn't be extended to the operators. But in this case, because there's no known production, and they're exploratory wells, that confidentiality would apply, so it's a different, different set of rules for exploration versus infill drilling or something like that. I believe that's all I need to say, but this map is up here for reference. Also, a well that we may talk about later, the 17-1 in ZOG, which was drilled back in 2005 by Holbrook Energy, is located here, and the Petrosun 15-1 is located here. So, any questions for me?
I have a question.
Bill.
Okay, Bill Fire Robin. So, in summary, we have layer cake geology here down to the pre-Cambrian at about 4,000 feet.
Approximately.
More or less, okay? So, you guys are drilling a deeper oil test, and in the course of drilling that whole common sense and good business, is this the way it always works, is you just test as you go?
Correct, that's what we're doing.
Which doesn't say your goal was to find something, you know, your goal is just a test, to find out what's there. But your goal, your actual primary goal, the reason you're drilling a deeper well is oil, and it's permitted as an oil exploration hole, not as a gas exploration hole. And the, so you're going deeper, whereas the -- And the, so you're going deeper, whereas the Ranger well is targeting one of the shallower zones for helium, they're not going as deep. And so there is as permitted as a gas. We're getting into the issues associated with a gas well. You're an oil well, and you might find gas in the course of drilling the oil well, but that's not your primary goal.
Correct.
And so if you found gas, you'd have to come back and we'd have to revisit the whole permitting because the permitting for gas is different than oil. Is that, am I correct, Dennis?
Not entirely, and I think Dr. Nations will concur with me on this. It's the commission's, it is, the way the commission should expect is that the operator that's drilling for oil is going to be drilling for oil and testing for oil. And because of the spacing being what it is, he should not be testing for any gas on his way down, as you alluded to. He's targeting his oil and that's what he's got. If he wanted to test for gas, I believe the rules would require a spacing exception for that, which I guess we could have one before we test it if we want to do that.
We have one.
Today as we speak, forces an oil well.
Okay.
Testing, he should be just sealing off, casing off any higher horizons.
So, Bill Fireobin, again, I'd like to ask Dale, Dale, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. So in the course of, you know, what I remember, I remember sitting oil wells decades and decades ago in college, but your gas chromatograph, if I remember right, basically your testing becomes, you know, the continuous testing as you're drilling, you get different gas information just because that's what the instrumentation provides, whether that's your goal or not. Is that a fair enough statement?
Yeah, yeah. Usually the drilling mud will be, there will be a chromatograph developed to show any occurrence of gas in the mud.
And within that, then, you can separate out the types of gases or, in other words, it's not just gas reading, it's nitrogen, it's methane, it's helium, it's...
I think it's calibrated for hydrocarbon gas.
Hydrocarbon gas, okay.
I don't know how helium, how it would detect helium, that's what I'm...
Yeah, well, that's kind of my question in here. So we're really, you're, the actual physical testing that is typical in the petroleum industry as you're drilling a well is going to give you a gas reading that's a hydrocarbon gas?
Yeah, but that doesn't qualify as testing.
Yeah, it's just a...
When you use the word testing, that means that you go back in with other tools and isolate the fluids from that particular interval.
Okay. Thanks for that, because testing to me, I look, you know, is in mining means a little bit different. But the point is, is the testing, the industry standard practice testing as you're drilling a well is going to give hydrocarbon gas readings, but not helium readings.
That's my understanding, but I'm not an expert on that.
Okay.
Actually, why don't we let Gordon finish first and then we'll ask for Ranger comments.
Yeah, okay. So I think that kind of, I just wanted to catch up to date with the current instrumentation is while you're drilling a hole.
Yeah, we have a mud logger unit, a mudlogger out there, and it tests the gases that are coming up along with, you know, that's the cuttings, we review those.
So you're able to separate out the gas entities as, you don't just get a...
Yeah, you're looking for gas kicks and so forth as you go down.
But my question is, your well logging unit out there, does it separate out, I don't know what, CO2, nitrogen, helium, methane, ethane, you know?
It does that, yes.
Does it, okay. Okay, thank you.
Gordon, do you have any other comments?
No, I wasn't at the last hearing, and so I didn't object. You know, there was nothing from me. I came in here this morning simply to say that we have no objection to Ranger drilling the 1,500-foot hole, if that's what they intend to do. And my question to the commission is if you go for a 1,500-foot, if that's allowed, can that be deepened in the future?
My understanding is to have another hearing for that.
Yeah.
Given the spacing exception situation.
Yeah. And the, so I don't have any objections, and, you know, this is wildcat country. We don't know what's down there. We are primarily, our primary target, I want to know if there's crude oil down there. We have indications and past wells in the area have shown that. The Holbrook Basin is a tough place to drill. You know, we spent a lot of money in drilling to the point where we're at right now. I'm also, I'm going to blow past my budget, but, you know, kind of a term, whatever moves down there, you know, we hope, because that'll get us cash flow quickly, that it be crude oil. There's indications also around there that there could be natural gas. Not so much helium deeper, but there's a possibility. It's mother nature, you know? We're just taking a, going off a SWAG system and with the data that we have. But anyway, I don't have any objections. That's simply what I, you know, all this other is just, you know, if Ranger wants to drill, let them drill, you know?
Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you, Gordon.
Does Ranger have some comments?
Thank you, Gordon.
Tony, do you want to come up and have a seat, or what do you want?
You give me half the money, you're going to drill the well, keep the half, we'll all be happy.
Yeah, well, you send them copies of your...
Please identify.
Tony Hines with Ranger, project developer, project manager on that. No, just to reiterate, we, the reason why we placed the well where we placed it at was because we have a surface use agreement that, where we have the right to use that particular surface. The geology indicates it's up dip to the west, and we placed the well on the east side of our surface area so that we would be as far away from the lease line as possible, but yet still on the surface that we have and get us up dip to be able to effectively drain if there's, if we encounter a reservoir that's actually contiguous that's capable of being drained. Nobody knows what the geology is until we drill the well, and so we're asking that it be approved where we've asked to have it drilled.
Is there any other comments from anyone? Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Hines.
Do we have any motions on this? Then I would make a motion myself, this Frank Thorwald, that the objection to Ranger that we, and I'm not sure the exact wording of this, but we disallow the, disallow it. Can anybody else clarify that a little bit better than what I just did?
This, Bill Fireobin, do you want to put it positive? The motion is that we proceed with the, considering the Ranger application period, feel a little bit more positive instead of disallowing something, just...
I would second Bill's.
Let me see if I can reword this just a little and then let the commission take it from there. It is my understanding that Ranger Development has submitted to this board a request for a well spacing exception. There was an objection to the well spacing exception submitted by United Helium. We have had two different hearings on the issue, and based upon the testimonials presented, my suggestion is the motion approve the Ranger Development well spacing exception for...
Dale's what, well, number 15-1 oh-so.
For the 15-1 oh-so well. Now, someone on the board's probably going to have to reiterate that a bit, but that would be my suggestion on how to word it.
Any other discussion on this?
Bill Fireobin, I like your wording. Let's just roll with it.
And I, Dale, I'll second Bill's response there.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Anybody decline?
I oppose.
Oppose?
One.
One opposed. The ayes carry it.
The next issue on is the re-entering Ram Oil 1-Horstein to test Shinnorump and possible certain units below that. Get a little more on what the issue is there.
Yeah, the issue is whether to authorize re-entry into an abandoned well from 1965, the Ram 1-9 Hortonstein, or re-approve the original proposal to drill the 9-1. They're approximately 111 feet apart. They're not in this area. I'm going to try to scare up a map for you to open up the projected screen there. And I was recommending to the commission and also Ranger just have an open dialogue about the pros and cons of one over the other, and then make a motion to approve or not at the end of the discussion.
Any comments on this? Is there any discussion?
We, Bill Fireobin, do you have a, can you put a map up to...
I'm going to try to do that.
Yeah, okay, I'd like to see a map before we, make discussion open while we plot that map.
Well, that's occurring, I was wondering if Mr. Hines has any more comments or a little more discussion of the purpose of re-entering 1-9 or what Ranger's thought process is somewhat.
Tony Hines with Ranger. We originally obtained approval for a location exception to drill a new well, which was a direct twin and offset to the, to this particular well, the Ram Oil 178, which was originally called the Hortonstein 1-9 well. When our contractor got to looking at the old well file, we finally got some more information, he saw that the well that had been plugged only had a 58-foot plug in the bottom of it and a 22-foot plug in the very top of that old well. And so in his opinion, it would be saving money, save time, and create less impacts if he just re-entered that well, drilled out the plugs, and tested the Shinnorump zone. That's his objective. Yes, objective. So, the second item on the list was the approval of the extension or re-approval of the actual 9-1 PDS well that we had previously obtained an approval on. That is a, more or less a backup in case he gets into the old well and for some reason can't actually get down. He would, you know, in all likelihood, like to go ahead and drill another well. But our intention is, he would like to go in that one, drill it out, test the same zone, and hopefully have success there, and then we wouldn't need to actually drill the 9-1 new well, a totally new well.
This is not a map, what I put on, what I put on the screen is not a map, but what it is, is a view of the Ram 1-9 Hortonstein standing in front of the plugged abandoned marker. In the distance, somebody is standing by the flag for the 9-1. He's standing as surveyed 111 feet away. And that just, I think, I don't know if Tony mentioned it, but your intent originally was to twin this well.
Right, and the reason why we started out twinning up in the Pentadome area is when we were looking at all of those well files that were on the Pentadome by Curmick Ghee, they'd actually cemented things from top to bottom. They filled the hole up with cement, and so therefore it was, it's more cost-effective and just as fast to go ahead and drill a new well than it is to try to go in an old one and drill all the cement back out of it in a smaller space. And so when we finally got some more information on this well, it was like, well, you know, let's go ahead and re-enter, which, you know, will create less impact by re-entering the old well.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is Dale. I would agree with that, that plan. Do you know that the cement plug would not have any bearing on re-testing the Shinnorump?
They'll need to repurferate the interval would be, is our presumption. I mean, there's no real good description, Dale, of how they pumped that plug on the bottom, whether it was, you know, were they on bottom when they put it in there, whether they were above the zone. We'll just have to find that out when they re-enter, but they would, regardless, they would repurferate the interval, which was previously, you know, stimulated, fracked and everything, and had about 150 mcF a day test on it in that Shinnorump zone.
Yeah, so you, I guess I'm questioning whether you're better off just drilling a new well instead of messing around with re-entering that one, just because of permeability problems and porosity problems in the old well. But that's not my problem, yeah.
Yeah, we don't think it's going to be a problem, but we'll know when we get there.
Okay.
All right. Dennis has one comment, real quick.
A few more comments. Mr. Fireobin asked for a map, this is a structural map showing the position of the proposed 9-1 that we approved back in July 20th, and the Ram 178, which is also aka Ram 1-9 Hortonstein. 178 was actually the permit number, and that's what's written on the plug and abandoned marker as well, 178. Anyway, the well that they were talking about twinning originally lasted in July is the red dot. The red circle here is the well to re-enter, and then issue the relative positions of the two. I think the section line is like right about here, right on or right near the section line, is that correct?
No, it's actually the half section line. The section line is just a, you know, like 100 feet or so to the east, the one that runs north and south.
Was that right?
Yeah, that was the reason why it was a location exception.
Okay. So, maybe part of the question is, in generic form, would we need to be reconsidering in a hearing to re-enter a well that doesn't meet today's well spacing exceptions? I have no idea what the rules required in 1965 for well spacing, but because of the fact that we're also talking about the 9-1 and it is a well spacing, I thought it prudent just throw the two of them together and have a discussion in the public hearing.
So, as you sit here today, Mr. Hines, what is it you're requesting of the board?
Approve the re-entry of the Hortonstein 1-9 well, and then secondarily to either re-approve or extend the previous approval, which has expired, it expired on January the 16th, for the 9-1 PDS in case they're unsuccessful in actually getting down inside the old well so that they could have the option to go ahead and re-drill a well.
This is Dale. I'm sorry, are you finished?
Yes.
I move that we grant that request.
Is that a motion, Dale?
It is a motion.
Do we have a second?
Actually, if we can have that restated, the motion restated for the commission before we take a vote so we know what we're voting on.
Okay. Further discussion on that, too? Go ahead, Dale.
Yeah, I move that we grant the request of Ranger Development to re-enter the, what's it called, Ram 9-1.
Ram 178.
Ram 178. And also to approve a new well, if needed, a new well drilled as twin.
Are you, you're talking about the extension of the 9-1?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Just a question, if we approve it, if we approve a twin, are we going to be creating a spacing issue?
That was kind of what I was thinking about. If you approve a new well, you would have a spacing issue problem. If you're approving a well in place, I don't think you are.
Yeah.
Is that the, Dennis?
That's my reading of it. I could argue both ways. Just on the surface of things, like, that's why I stress the point that I don't know what the spacing exception requirements were back in 1965, if they had existed. And that well is completely abandoned, so that any interest in that well doesn't exist anymore. I, given our rules today, it's irrelevant, but I would just like to point out that it's my understanding that Ranger has all the leases tied up in any adjoining lands, so they'd be draining themselves if there's some threat of draining. But the Ram... But the Ram 178 is not a producing well, but it is outside of our modern-day spacing exceptions. We definitely need to have the hearing like we're having on the 9-1 to reapprove it, but because they're so close and because the Ram 178 doesn't meet today's standards for a spacing exception, I thought we should have a discussion of that. It may require some kind of legal review for the future to determine, you know, if this comes up again, but I don't see a problem with the motion as it was stated. I don't think that there's any threat to adjoining land holders or lease holders. It's going to be one or the other, he's not going to do both.
Yeah.
Did I confuse the issue? Well, this is Stephen Cooper. My concern is I want some consistency with what the board is looking at doing here.
Right.
We've now spent, on a prior matter, a long discussion about spacing issues. Now we're coming to this matter, and in theory, the reentry of the well, I think that's, I think if they believe it's economical for them to do it, I think that's a smart idea. I also would not have a concern if they came to a public hearing and wanted a spacing exemption to drill a companion well, but I want to make sure that whatever we're doing here, that we're following our own spacing rules, and we're not coming and legislating midstream on any public hearing, exceptions to spacing rules, rather than following the procedure that we have laid out in the administrative regulations, which govern our commission.
That's true. So if we, just, I have a question, Mr. Cooper, if we?
State who you are.
This is Rick's Attorney General's office. From your discussion, if this board were to just approve reentry of the well, would that require a well spacing exception? And that is my concern. And if so, do we push this issue off to the next public meeting, request that Rangers submit documentation for a well spacing exception and take up the issue at that time? As a suggestion to ensure that we don't begin changing our rules in the middle of the meeting?
Question? Yeah, my response is that the motion, the motion that's on the floor that's been moved and seconded has two parts. One is granting the exception to it and reentry. I think reentry is an excellent idea, for what, for the reasons been stated here. My concern is about bootstrapping something on there that has not gone through the public notice hearings and everything that's there. And I would say that obviously, that with what Mr. Turner has stated, that because they own all the well leases in the adjoining area, that if they did a well spacing requirement, I think it would make perfect sense, and I can't think of an obstacle now that we, you know, would not approve such a thing at a future hearing. But I'm worried about basically doing that today when we haven't gone through our procedures.
I agree.
This is Frank Thorwald. We've already approved in the past a 9-1, and what we're talking about is an extension today. Now, my concern would be that we don't have both wells. You drill one and then the second, and it turns out to be, work well, and then you drill the second one. I can't see why you would do that, but I don't necessarily have an issue, as long as we are meeting our guidelines, as long as you're not going to drill both wells if you've...
My suggestion is we split up the issues, as Mr. Cooper described. If, we can approve the reentry today, if they are going to drill on Ram 1-9, which would require a well spacing exception, that that is brought forth in the next meeting, the next publicly noticed meeting, and we address the issue then if the documentation's properly submitted.
That's my concern, and I wouldn't even have a problem with doing a special meeting if we needed to do that to accommodate.
I concur. So my suggestion is the motion that's currently on the floor be withdrawn?
This is Dale. I withdraw that motion.
Yeah, I withdraw my second.
Okay, let's define it then. With regard to the exception for the Ram 178, do we have a motion exclusively for that?
Is that the well that's being re-entered, or is it, okay?
That's the reentering of the Ram 178.
So, the motion you're looking forward is granting them permission?
To reenter.
To reenter. I move that we grant them permission to reenter Ram 178.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. This is Dale.
Any further discussion? Everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Dale?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes carry. Dennis, what's?
I think that takes care of the hearing.
Now, with respect to going back to the 9-1, we will put that off to see at a future point if that's, you need that?
Well, could we, if I may, this is Tony Hines with Ranger again. The, we previously had an approved location exception of the 9-1, so all the data is in, is already available, it's out in the public record, and was previously approved for that, that well. The well would only be needed if they're unsuccessful in reentering the Ram 178. So postponing, the problem would be is if he's out there with his rig, and he's drilling, and he's working over the other one, he's going to want to immediately move over if he's unsuccessful. And so we would have to have, we would be calling for an emergency one if we didn't go ahead and approve the extension, maybe with a condition that only if he can't get down on the other one is the extension valid or approved?
My suggestion is, what Mr. Cooper's also suggested, which is, if you need to use Ranger 9-1, go to the other well, is that you submit for a well spacing exception, and this board sit down and if necessary have a special meeting.
And so the question is, it's already been approved once, why would we want to go through that process?
The well spacing exception was approved?
Yes, it was.
For the 9-1 PDS was already approved.
It was a previously approved, or what they're asking for is an extension on that if the Ram 178 is not successful.
The permit expired January 15th or so, 180 days after it was issued on July 20th, July 17. So it's really, that's why I included in today's hearing, because the commission approved this.
This is Dale. Yeah, that's a very good argument, that, you know, once he's got the rig on that site, and then if we delayed him a month, well, he'd have to arrange for the rig again. That's why I incorporated, tried to incorporate that in my initial proposal, to allow for the extension of the permit for 9-1. So I would move a second motion to approve that extension, and I'm not sure if I've got the right terminology, but I think it's the 9-1 that would be the twin. Is that right?
Yeah, this is Bill Fireobin. I've got a question. So you've applied for and been granted permission, but that, did that permission expire January?
Yeah.
In our February? So it's like, that permission actually has expired for, been for a month, so it actually does not exist anymore?
No, this is Frank Thorwald. Part of the reason that we did not address that at the last meeting was because of the other motion contesting their operations and that, and we put it off until we got further information for this month.
So, Bill Fireobin, so what we're saying is that permit being expired is actually a function of how us, the commission, the actions and decisions we made, is that correct?
So, if I may clarify, not to contradict.
Dennis Turner?
Yeah, this is Dennis Turner again. So, clarifying, not trying to contradict, but had Ranger formally requested an extension, I'd be authoritative to grant it, and I would have granted it, in case we wouldn't be having the conversation today, but it's merely what's happened, we've had a hearing on the 9-1 on July 20th of last year, commission approved that, along with two other wells that have been drilled. This third well, the 9-1, was not. Hindsight says maybe they should have, or whatever, but had they asked for an extension on the 9-1, I would have granted it, but it would have had to have been done on before, about the 15th of January. The rule says an operator has 180 days to drill a well unless they get an extension. So, the time's lapsed, so it's kind of like we have to start over, or you have to grant an extension after the fact, if you will. How the authority and how the rules are written for that are a little murky to me, so I thought the easiest way is just to have the whole discussion in the hearing.
This is Stephen Cooper. I want to be clear, on the public hearing notice that we've given, the extension was part of the public notice?
Yes.
Perhaps?
See that, I've got it on the board.
I just want to make sure, perhaps, let's see if there's any comment out there about the extension.
So it's?
Number three?
Yes, it's number three on the item, so.
Must have closed it. It's there, though.
That was going to be my second point, but it has been noticed out to the public, so.
Okay, you've got any more points?
I think we're okay. Is there any further discussion on this? Do we have a, Dale, do you want to reword your motion, or?
Yeah, I move that we grant the request for extension of the drilling permit on the Ram 9-1 for Ranger.
Do we want to qualify that, that that will not be used unless the other one proves unsuccessful?
I wouldn't do that.
You don't think so?
How long is the extension?
How long is the extension for, Dale?
I'm not sure what the technical limits are, but I would think that should be for one year.
My pattern had been in the past when granting extensions is to give another six months, 180 days.
I'd go with that.
Okay, and then if we have to do it again, I might consider bringing it before the commission again for discussion. I would do this with anybody, but I automatically would give anybody, the first time they ask for an extension, I'd give them another six months.
Yeah, I'll modify my motion to grant the extension for a period of six months.
From today's date?
Yeah.
Any further discussion on this?
Just a technical point, if it expired on January 16th, that we're sitting here today.
You're correct, Mr. Cooper, I think it'd do six months from January 16th.
Yes. It'd be six months from January 16th?
Yeah, that's right.
Do you want to modify that, Dale?
Yes, I'll modify that, we'll grant the, I move to move the, to, I move to grant the extension of drilling permit on the Ram 9-1 for a period of six months, beginning January 16th, 1918, or 2018.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I believe that closes the general meeting.
We, the public hearing portion of this has been closed.